If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Can I get roll call, please?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Littkey.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Pocov.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwain.
Here. Thank you very much for that. We have a guest presentation tonight with Clackamas Community College. The Bronn Bond presentation. So Jane and, and I'm not sure your name, what was it? Lori, it's good to see you tonight. Go ahead and step up to the podium.
Come to the podium instead. Yes, yes. Sorry, we had a quick change since we were at plain sounds.
Yes, fine. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm really pleased to be here. My name is Jane Reed and I'm here as been a board member on Clackamas Community College, representing Estacada and Colton and now Malala. And I've been on the board for about the last sixteen years and it is just a real pleasure to be able to show you tonight. We're kind of wrapped up. We passed a bond in two thousand and fourteen where we did a lot of new building, a lot of repairing of old building, a lot of adding to it. And since this is our community's college, and I have a feeling that many people here have had connections with, with Clackamas. We were pleased to be able to show this to you and share you the, share with you the highlights. And with me is Lori Hall. She is our Executive Director of College Relations and Marketing. And she has been at the college since two thousand and fifteen. And she is wonderful. And I'm so glad she's be able to be with me tonight. We're going to kind of share the presentation and we'll, we will make it fairly quick because I know you have a lot on your agenda, but I'll show you this. So if you could go to the, do we, do we have a way of controlling that or do you do? Okay. So what shall you go? Sadie, Sadie. Okay. Okay. So like I mentioned, in two thousand and fourteen, the college district approved a ninety million, ninety million dollar bond for us to expand and update our buildings, facilities and grounds. We constructed three new buildings, expanded and remodeled others, improved transportation to, from and around the college and a lot more. We were also able to leverage that ninety million by getting state matches for four of the projects and getting grants for seismic work and the transit center and even furniture. So in all, we were able to leverage the bond dollars into more than a hundred and thirty-six million dollars. So I'm going to show you a few of our larger projects. There's a list of, of all of the pieces that were in that and what it costs. But this was the first one that we completed, and this is Harmony West. It's in our Harmony Community Campus in Milwaukee, not far from the pool, the Clackamas Pool there. And it complements the Harmony East Building that had been there for a number of years and can kind of completes our allied health campus. And it replaces the former Dale Ikis Junior High School, which was later used by the Oregon Institute of Technology. We purchased that. It was torn down and that was built up. And it allowed us to grow our health science work department, our workforce development and general education offerings in Milwaukee. So you can, students can now start and complete a number of courses and offerings, programs on this campus and do all of it there without having to travel to the Oregon City Campus for, for classes. It's three floors. It includes labs and classrooms and a nice, large community space, which is used, which is open to the community and it's really lovely. It was completed in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. And we received an eight million dollar match from the state to fund this project. And Sadie, the next one, there are a couple of pictures here. This is a look into the lobby area. Both of those pictures is just beautiful, very open. One of the things that I loved about when we were planning this and thinking about what it should be like, all of the very creative ways they built in opportunities for students to be together, to study together, you know, things that are just more private ones and then open places where a number of folks could, could be together. It was very thoughtfully, it was very thoughtfully designed. And another, the next picture here is, let's picture some of the labs that were here, the nursing labs or that were used for nursing and, and other programs as well. And this is the Holden Industrial Technology Center. This is, I don't know if you've been onto campus, but this is one of the more dramatic buildings on the campus in Oregon City when you go there. It was completed in two thousand and eighteen and it also received an eight million dollar match from the state. And the building increases teaching, training and partner space as well as creating flexibility to meet the training needs of partnership programs. So we have partnerships with a number of corporations and companies in the area and we, they let us use their machinery, some of this amazing machinery and we train folks on it and then they hire them right away. So some students don't even finish their coursework. They go right to off, to jobs. There are a lot. And you can see here some of the different machineries and, and tools and things that students are working on. Another feature which is, I really like is in the technology center is the less deasis. Is that how we say it? Less deasis maker space. And this is a workshop where students and community members can, can, they have access to tools they need to create prototypes, models, masterpieces. So they get proper, after proper training, which they can receive there, participants can use equipment ranging from basic woodworking machinery and three D printing to CNC milling and laser cutters. And the lab includes woodworking and construction, traditional metalworking and sheet metal, a welding and cutting station, digital manufacturing and electronics and sewing. And it's the first of its kind in Clackamas County. And if you are interested in checking it out, it is open on Fridays from five to nine and anyone can come and see what it's like and make something if you want. Okay, the next one is DeJarden Hall. And this was an addition to our existing science facility. It was, had been built thirty-five years ago. But now it is, it was outdated and actually contributed to cast class overcrowding and long wait lists, which affect our students in a lot of ways to not be able to get the class you, you want or you need when you need it is, is hard and can put back your time and getting it takes to get out of, to finish your, your degree or your, what you're working for. And the project doubled the college's chemistry lab capacity, accommodating an additional two hundred and fifty chemistry students a year, which reduced the class size and also the wait lists. And the new labs expose students to modern scientific work environments that are similar to what they will find when they transfer to a university or out into the workforce. The building serves students in physics, chemistry, biology, environmental sciences and water, environmental technology. And as part of this project, we, you were able to use funds from Connect Oregon and ODOT grants. And we built a new Transit Center and Shared Youth Path that connects the Transit Center to Oregon City High School. And this is a look inside there. It's really another beautiful building in that it's, it's just so nicely designed. They have a lot of displays of things. That, that against the wall, there are a lot of water birds and there is a, what is that hanging at the top? A doll? A baby beluga is hanging down from the top there and, and so that is cool. And let me see, did I miss a page here? No. Oh, there it is. And, oh, and this is fascinating. This is the DNA of a cougar built into the side of the wall. It was very, very carefully placed and the people who we saw when they were putting it in, when they were doing it, they were so careful to get it exactly right. But a cougar is the mascot for Clackamas and that's its DNA right there. And so do you want to start with this? Jump over here now. Thanks.
All right. Good. Starting with the automotive expansion remodel. So in two thousand and twenty, we opened our garage bay doors to remodel and expanded automotive departments. So when manufacturing moved out of Barlow Hall and into the new Holden Industrial Technology Center, we were able to double our automotive department space to split service technology on one side of the building and out of body collision and repair on the other side of the building. And this remodel and expansion provides students and instructors the space they need for a productive learning environment. Students learn a space that mimics real shops that actually clock in and clock out with time cards into the shops. It gives them the experience they need to be fully prepared after the workforce. And today, these days are all filled with cars, vehicles that the students are working on. And many of these students have jobs secured before they can complete the degree. They have such a demand right now that auto shops are coming in, paying for students tuition, their, their tools and equipment and everything. It's carrying jobs before they are done with the program. The span, expansion also enhances the space for colleges high school program where students from area high schools come on campus and take classes with our instructors. In recent years, we've seen a decline in secondary schools being able to offer career technical education. And so we're helping fill that gap by bringing those students onto our campus. And next is the Wachino Welcome Center. I tried to get fancy with the slideshow and bed time lapse videos throughout the entire thing and we're having technical difficulties. So y'all have the link and you'll be able to watch all the time lapses. They're really fun to watch. Our last major project was the Wachino Welcome Center, which changed the way we serve students and greet visitors. This now acts as the front door of the college. It houses our student services such as advising, counseling and financial aid and potentially create a space where students can have most of their questions answered in one setting. We used to send them to one building for financial aid, another building for advising and they're going all across campus, getting all these services. And now they can do it all in one spot. It also connects to the Billabrough Community Center, which was given a facelift. The community center side houses our student government, disability resource, multicultural center and our vet center, which is ranked with the top veteran centers in the nation. Offers better study spots and easy access to the cafe. If you've ever been to the community center prior to this project, I would wait you would recognize that it is lighter, brighter and much more welcoming. And then Wachino, when we built this building, we knew we wanted to honor the indigenous tribes who are on the homeland of the college resides. And so we did a lot of research and discussion across the college. And then we met with the Grand Ron Tribal Council and proposed the name of the building after Chief Dan Wachino, who signed the Willamette Treaty of the eighteen fifty-five on behalf of the Clackamas people. The tribe's very supportive of this and we were honored to have Tribal Council Chairwoman Cheryl Kennedy and other distinguished tribal members attend the grand opening. So that was a very special event for us. And actually we have Chairwoman Kennedy coming to college tomorrow to give a lecture. So if you're interested, come check it out. Few shots from the inside, the welcome desk on the left. And on the right, we actually have a clear view of Mount Hood on sunny days. And we have the state government center on the left and another shot of the lobby area. Roger Rook, in May of last year, we started the renovation, the first floor of Roger Rook, which was vacated with the completion of Wachino Welcome Center. So this floor now includes the President's Office of the CCC Foundation at our very first Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. And also this building has a new large community room that's available for college community events and Board of Education meetings. And we just celebrated the completion of this project in March. And all throughout the bond, we made upgrades and renovations to existing facilities to create cost savings and increase efficiencies. Some of these included elevator upgrades, title nine locker room upgrades, extension of Myers Road, sternby improvements, roofs, wayfinding and campus insecurity upgrades. As part of the bond, we wanted to be able to, the board that was, really wanted to establish work for schools to involve students as well as local businesses. And so we created the sale and the boat program, the sale programs as for student applied integrated learning, which is a mouthful, but encourages architects and contractors to involve our students in the work. So they had internships, mentorships, jobs, we can cite visits, classroom visits. Just got them involved in the construction process. And the goal was to get a thousand hours or more participation and we topped out at almost two thousand hours. And then the boat program, which is business opportunities achievement targets. I don't know who named these. Encourage employment opportunities across Clackamas County to minority women and veteran owned businesses as well as small emerging businesses. And this was to encourage contractors and subcontractors priorities prioritized using these businesses on the projects. And our goal was ten percent of all construction costs and we got nearly three times that at twenty-nine percent. And finally, to top it all off, we are planning a bond party. After seven years of construction, it's now time to celebrate. And so on August fifth, we're going to have a campus wide celebration. Activities for all ages, entertainment, food, access to all of our bond projects and buildings and hope you can come out and enjoy the day with us and help us spread the word.
Just to thank, I get to just thank you all for, for listening to us and and this is your college and this is all of our college, which is, which is really cool. So I hope you can visit it if you've not been there. And if you want a tour, let me know, let Lori know, let our president know. He would be glad to give you a tour. We have an amazing president too, which is very fortunate. So anyway, thank you again and thank you.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. We appreciate it. Next we have citizen and community group comments. I have Brandy Licky.
Thanks for waiting on me to hobble up here. It's a little bit harder right now. Hi guys, I just wanted to update you and let you know how the fundraiser went. The fire department had a fundraiser for the Nelson family last Sunday. And with them and all the volunteers that were there, we raised over five thousand dollars for this family. I thought it was really cool to see the mayor there actually working and volunteering and my husband, counselor, like he was there as well volunteering. They were busting their butts. I know Sadie came and had some breakfast. It was awesome. It was really good to see the community come out. I was really disappointed that more of you didn't come. That would have been cool to see because this family has done a lot. I'm twenty plus years they've given to this community, one way or another. Brooke works for the city. He also works, he's a volunteer firefighter. Chris also volunteers for the fire department. She's also been saving animals in this area for just as long. So it was really great to see the community come together again. Thank you, mayor. Thank you to my husband. Thank you, Sadie, for those of you who came. I wish more did. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Do I have any online? No? Okay. We are at the consent agenda. Now the wildfire, appreciate is here. Shall we?
Yes. After, once the consent agenda is approved, if you want to read that out loud, feel free. And then we could do, do some photos. I'll get my camera ready.
Okay, that said, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And now I will read the proclamation. Okay. We have the proclamation, "The wildfires increasingly pose a threat to homes and communities throughout the west as more people move into the wildland areas of our state. Most of these fires are human caused. And whereas this continued to growth of communities into the wildland urban interface has elevated the, the need for wildfire prevention and preparedness in both the community and individual homeowners levels. And whereas a long-term climate trend and the buildup of forest fuels have further increased the wildfire risk. These factors coupled with the expansion of the wildland urban interface are challenging efforts to protect citizens' properties and our natural resources. And whereas wildfires are an essential eco, ecosystem process which cannot be climated from our landscapes, therefore coordinated education, entertaining concerning how, where and why wildfires bum as well as calibrate, calibrative efforts to increase durability of homes, property and paramount in coexisting in a fire environment. And whereas the local, state and federal wildfire agencies of Oregon in partnership with the Fire Prevention Organization in the state are working together to increase awareness of wildfires. Whereas the state of Oregon declared May to be Wildfire Awareness Month. Now, therefore, I shall drink wine, mayor of City of Estacada hereby recognize May to be Wildfire Awareness Month. In Estacada, encourage all community members to join this observance. So thank you for that. And we have a fire department here.
They're here to receive that. And I don't know if everybody wants to get in a photo together with them or if you just want to do.
Let's get them all in here. Let's come up here. They're kicking in chairs.
I didn't realize the print was so small on that. I should have given you a blown up copy of that.
The advantage, the advantage we have is we can blow it up on.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe not. Yeah, you got it back to.
I got the good chair then.
Okay. Now we're at Department and Committee Reports. Any of the commissions have anything to report on tonight? Oh, I got bunches. Okay, Jerry, we'll start.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say that the downtown Estacada Commission did, did verify that the, the grand marshal, I didn't, didn't have the brain freeze this time. Grand Marshal of the parade is the American Legion. They did verify that at their meeting and they do have a lot of big plans. They're still working on a, I don't know, here it goes again. They're still working on a theme for the parade. But that should be decided at this next meeting. So, but it's exciting, the work that they're putting in. And they did vote Hannah Smith and Bennett Johnson are co-chairs again, but the one thing they did add is Connie Redman is the vice chair. So it's, it's going to be an exciting year for downtown Estacada Commission.
So the DEIC, they are still in the process of updating their community groups list. DEIC members are looking to connect with the school and the school board to begin talks to coordinating student council to promote civic engagement. The city's natural hazard mitigation plan update is underway and the team went through the draft and added community assets to it with the goal of mitigating the risk to community members such as elderly and low income.
Hey, great. Thank you, Charity.
Yeah, so Parks and Rec met. Shirley Burke attended her first meeting, so everybody was able to welcome her on board. Elena went over the committee one-on-one kind of Parks and Recs, the legal stuff. Kind of their obligation, what roles they fill, which, which was nice that that was, you know, Shirley's first meeting. Just to remind the community, and this is something they talked about, that the Wade Creek Phase Three grand opening will be June fourth from one to three. So come on out if you can make it. And they went over just kind of some discussions about the sprint into spring, a little bit of recap there since they had to push that run out a couple of weeks. And let's see what else. They are still discussing kind of potential areas for future football courts. After the whole like Campanella thing. And so they're, they're trying to figure out a good spot for that. So things are still working out, but moving forward. And yeah, it's a good meeting.
So the Traffic and Public Safety Committee. The couple of things is they identified where they're going to have a national night out, which is going to be over here and the parking lot. They were talking, one of the key things that they brought back from the stakeholder meeting for the TPSC. Or the traffic safety study thing. I always forget the name of that. It kills me. Anyways, TPS, right?
TSP.
TSP, that one.
Many appears.
Kills me. Anyways, so the key thing is that they brought back was basically taking like bikes to schools and kind of safe routes. Kids ride bikes to school. So that was kind of one of the things that they're talking about when getting a safe routes for those, whether they be on the road or alternate. They also wanted to make sure that we scheduled in a second meeting with the council, since the last one was kind of singularly focused. They would like to see the Clackamas County Sheriff coming to all the meetings. Be there every time we're having a representative, whether it be a public, the, the public communications officer or not. So, and the last thing they brought up was a speed limit at Hemsiger in two twenty-four, which is a concern, but the, also the speeds going in and out of town off of Eagle Creek Road as brought up before. So that was kind of the key things for the meeting there. So.
Thank you for that. There's some more here. So we will go on to the city management report.
Okay. Thank you. I have one thing to discuss this evening and that is in, in regard to the transportation system plan update. On April twenty-fourth, the council and the Traffic and Public Safety Committee met, received a presentation about the, how the process was going. And I might have Taylor, Ellen fill in here too. But also we, we have spoken with the Infrastructure Committee. We did a presentation for them. They came back and they were able to work together on their own and go through it and, and present some priorities from the committee. But the Traffic and Public Safety Committee and then several of you on the council also, and it seemed to indicate that you would like to have a another work session rather than going, kind of hashing through that on your own and sending things in. So Taylor had sent out a poll and it looks like Tuesday, the twenty-third between six and eight is when the most folks could attend. That's actually when the Traffic and Public Safety Committee usually meets. So we would need to rearrange, you know, add an additional meeting time for them. But the question really is, is that, do you want to proceed with that, working on it together? Like that, it would cost, it could cost approximately three thousand dollars to bring in the consultant as they, they'll put, do additional work to prepare a to facilitate that for two to three hours that evening. But if you'd like to do that together, if everybody's on board for it, did you want to add anything to that or is that, did it pretty much cover?
I would just add, if that is desired and if that, if the council's okay with going forward with that price, it's definitely most effective and efficient to have the consultant there. You know, people are going to come to that meeting wanting to get their questions answered. And so if we can have them leave with the questions answered, that's ideal. Otherwise, there's going to be, there's so much technical information that like we staff aren't going to be able to answer right then and there. So we'd be kind of going back and forth between that group and okay, we'll get back to you with that answer. We'll get back to you with that answer. So it'd be.
The most efficient ways.
Most efficient to.
Have the consultant there. Right. Have the consultant there. Have you all in one place, have a facilitated discussion and able to answer questions. And so if you are still wanting to dig into that, because the other alternative would be to look at it on your own. Um, still wanting to dig into that because all, the other alternative would be to look at it on your own, come to the public open house. Um, answer, you know, ask staff questions. We could do it that way also, but it just seemed like. Kind of the group dynamic and the synergy that you were getting, working together seemed like a good thing. So.
I think getting all our questions answered at one time, I'd be more efficient of the time.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Is everybody on board with that?
Yeah, I think. Good. Okay, then I will work with traffic and public safety to see how we can slide their meeting one way or the other. And, um, we'll have that. It'll be May twenty-third from six to eight. That was the, if we run a little long, we'll be prepared to stay a little later than that, but, um, we'll try to cover the bulk of it in that two hours. Uh, for those that would have to leave, but we'll get that set up. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a few public hearings here, so I'm going to just open up the first public hearing. And I will ask staff to explain the funding and the supplemental budget.
Okay, this is the supplemental budget and, um, we'll have. Did you want to explain that or?
Um, so this is changing the budget and a few different funds. Um, the main one is for the, um, Wade Creek Park Phase Three. And that is, um, just. Um, bringing in some funds that are beginning, we didn't, um, have some invoices paid at year end last year. So our beginning fund balance was higher than we anticipated. Um, we, sorry. Um, are, we earned some interest in that account this year. We received some donations. And then we also had a couple of transfers that didn't get done in the prior fiscal year. So, um, it increases that. Um, fund for a total of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine oh five. And then in the. General fund, we received the grant for the Lake Shore project. Or we will be receiving that and we hadn't anticipated that. So we're adding that in. Um, in the library fund, we had, um, planned to transfer eighty-seven hundred dollars from the library reserve fund. But we actually had more money on hand at the beginning of the year. So that increases that to the total amount of fourteen nine forty-six. I think that was it. Oh, and in the L I D bonding fund, we do this every year because we pay down our, um, loan balance. Um, with extra funds that we receive. So that increases that by twelve thousand four oh five. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, um, there's no questions from the audience in front of me. So does council have any questions they'd like to ask about this? Joel?
Um, so part of this was during our conversation, we talked about the Wade Creek Park thing.
Yes.
And I, I wanted to give you a chance to share with everybody where you told me about the Wade Creek Park and what we're doing that. Since we are paying additional on that. You, I wanted you to have a chance to share the other half of that.
Yes, so we had, um, anticipated that the Wade Creek Park Three would project. And the community building would wrap up by June thirtieth last year. Um, but it did not. So that's why we're, we need to, we hadn't budgeted any, anything in that fund. Um, so that's why we have to account for the, um, beginning fund balance and funds received. And we also had change orders of which we hadn't, we didn't. Budget for contingency, which you always should do, but our intention was to run it as tight as possible. Um, and basically say, this is what we've got. This is what we're going to spend. However, when you're, uh, digging in the ground, oftentimes there's things that are unexpected. So we did have change orders, the, the largest of which. Was for the over excavation of the unacceptable pond material. It turned out to be a lot more sediment and muck underneath that pond than was anticipated. Um, and so digging that out and then, and moving it and bringing in some, um. The good filth to use on the project. Um, still, even with all that, the total percent, uh, the total, because the percent of total construction contract was. Um, related to the change orders was nine point nine percent, um, change orders overall. And so, um. That, that is why, that's the bulk of that. It was the, for the over excavation, but that's why we're moving the funds over there and it is because it's a. Um, it is overdue and there are, I, I do honestly believe that the contractor was up against some. Some challenges with the significance of the pond, the changes in the pond and the, um, that culvert. I, I don't know if you guys remember what it used to look like, that how that road pinched down there. In fact, I need to go on Google Earth while it's still. There and take a picture of it because it's, um, so much better. That was a huge part of the project. Um, and there was some. Uh, there was a sewer line that was at a higher elevation. That's why now when you kind, you kind of go over the bridge. Um, as you're going that way. But anyway, just to say, there was, there are some things that I think were legitimately why it took longer, but the. Contract calls out liquidated damages, um, for two hundred and fifty dollars a day after substantial completion. And so. There could be, by the time we figure that all out, it could be eight months or so of, um. Uh, those two hundred and fifty dollar a day damages to the city that we will be assessing. So, um. Just wanted to share that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more questions? No? All right, um, shall I leave the public hearing open or close this one and reopen for each one?
Yeah, close and reopen.
Okay, I'm going to close the supplemental budget, uh, public hearing and I will now. Uh, open another public hearing for subdivision application twenty twenty-three dash zero one, South Ginsing. So we'll turn that over to the staff.
Okay, yes, I'm going to turn that over to Alan Wilson, city planner, and he's going to make his presentation. We're going to, um, hold all council questions. This will be a time to hear the presentation. And then if there's any public comment, um, they can make that. And then when we get down to council business, or we'll go through the, the public hearing process. But the time for council to discuss and ask questions is when it's down in council business. And so. Um, we'll just hold questions until the end. So jot some notes if you have questions along the way, but. We're going to try and move through this as quickly as possible for the presentation part.
Thanks, Melanie.
Thank you, Alan.
Good evening, councillors. I'm gonna, um, gonna go ahead and present planning staff's report on the subdivision. Application twenty twenty-three dash zero one dash S, also known as the Ginsing subdivision or Valley View Estates. So this is a detail from the comp time map and we can see that the application site is in R one. Or the low density residential. Here's another picture in aerial view. Um, so it involves three properties. And you can see that there's a home situated on one that home is, um, proposed to remain. And this is the preliminary layout. Um, the subject site is just over five acres. And the applicant proposes creating twenty new lots in one new local public street. Um, since it's in the R one, all lots are proposed to be at least seventy-five hundred feet, square feet. Um, street improvements would be required to city standards. Um, that means sidewalks and all sides of the new street. There'd be half-street improvements on the east side of North Ginsing, Northeast Ginsing and a cross rock will be required across Dawson Court. At the, um, at the intersection there. Um, city services will be required as well. That means a new looped water main connects from the southeast corner. To the northwest corner, will be new sewer main connecting the north, at the northwest corner of the site. And new stormwater facilities also connecting near the northwest corner. Um, and as I said, there's one house located. Let me see my cursor. Yeah. Yes, so this would be the existing house that would remain. And, um, all accessory buildings are proposed to be removed. Okay, here's another more close-up map of the comp plan. And, uh, let's see. The density residential, as I said, it's about a ten-minute walk to all schools in the areas. That's two, the two elementaries, middle school and the high school. It's just about a half mile to city hall in downtown. Which is a ten to fifteen minute walk, two minute drive, and it's less than a mile to the library and Wade Creek Park. So back to the preliminary map, um, the plan will. Just take a look at some of the public improvements that are proposed and required, starting with the utilities. So for the water, um, the new water main is proposed to connect to an existing stub at the southeast corner of the site. And that's originating from northeast Oakview Lane. And our city engineer Kurt is recommending that the eight-inch waterline loop be extended. Along Northeast Ginsing Drive to tie into the existing six-inch water line at the northwestern edge of the site. And that is in order to replace the four-inch water line that's currently running from the proposed new street to the northwest corner of the property. I have some maps to show what that looks like. So that's the proposed loop in the application. And this is with the requirement that Kurt is asking that we include as a condition. Um, yeah, and basically his point is that. The four-inch water line right now is inadequate to serve development and eight-inch PVC is the minimum size main line. That's allowed for any development. And then on the sewer. So the existing home on the site is using septic right now, but that would be de-commissioned. Um, the home would then connect to city sewer via the proposed sewer main. And all sewer lines would need to be at least eight inches in diameter. And here's a look at that routing. There. And again, connecting at the northwestern corner of the subject site. And on to stormwater. So the proposed, proposed system shows a storm service lateral. That connects to each lot and ultimately to the city's stormwater system. There are no drywalls proposed in this application. And Kurt, the engineer, notes that all public storm drainage must be sized to convey runoff based on the twenty-five year storm event. Um, engineer also recommends that the city allow the stormwater easement along Ginsing Drive to overlap. A portion of the public utility easement. And here is a look at that stormwater system running. And again, connecting at the northwest corner of the site. Okay, now on the streets. So northeast Ginsing is borders the subject site on its western edge. Um, and a new street is proposed, a cul-de-sac, as we've seen in, in the plan, in that we called northeast Dawson Court. Um, see, so six lots are proposed to front northeast Ginsing. And fourteen would take access from the new cul-de-sac. And let's take a look at Ginsing. So as I mentioned before, there'll be half-street improvements on northeast Ginsing on the eastern side. And, um, as discussed, also the engineer recommends extending that eight-inch waterline loop under Northeast Ginsing. To tie into the existing six-inch water line at the top left corner of the site. And here's a cross-section, the proposed cross-section. And this design and the improvements proposed by the applicant all satisfy city standards. And let's take a look at northeast Dawson Court. Um, so I'd like to point out right now that the proposed length of northeast Dawson does exceed our code maximum by, by quite a, quite a bit. Um, however, uh, the city engineer said that the design and topography of the development presents. A unique situation and that actually the length should be fine. Um, as long as the fire and other safety standards are followed and those are included in the conditions. And here is a cross-section of northeast Dawson Court. Um, and the street will be constructed to city standards for local streets. There's a twenty-eight foot curb to curb width. And there would be parking permitted on only one side of the street and no parking signage would be installed on the other side. Okay, and just a brief, gonna run down to some of the highlights, the conditions. Um, in this report, there are forty-eight conditions of approval, which is not unusual for a subdivision. Um, application, but, um, yeah, just hit some of the main points. Um, so all public improvements will be provided as required by our code. So as discussed, that includes water, sewer, stormwater. Streets as well as lighting and private utilities. All utilities will be undergrounded. And as per our code, all these improvements must be completed or bonded for before the plat is submitted for final approval. Um, streets and sidewalks will be built standards, city standards. Uh, the driveway spacings requirements will be met. Uh, in the preliminary plan, there were. There were two, um, we found two driveways that were a little too close to the intersection and we required as a condition that they, they. Move those back so that it meets our, our fifty foot from the intersection standard. Uh, stormwater will be managed. Uh, there's a requirement in the conditions to prefer, provide a stormwater report. In order to determine the correct size of the detention system. Um, also effects of construction will be mitigated to the extent possible. Uh, we included a condition that would require an erosion control plan to be submitted. And a requirement that unsurfaced areas, um, need to be re- revegetated after development. Um, a traffic management plan will also need to be submitted, showing how the impacts of construction traffic on our city streets will be minimized. And finally, the fire code standards will be met. Um, several conditions related to fire safety, um, including this pertaining to hydrants. Street design, water flow, et cetera, are included. All right, and next steps for this application will. Um, we'll begin the phase of the hearing where the public comments considered and then council can ask any questions of staff in the applicant. And then council closes public hearing and will decide to approve, prove of conditions or deny this application. And with that, I will turn it back over to council.
Okay, thank you. I have no requests from the audience at this point. Uh, the city council wish to ask any questions? Charity?
Do we have anybody from the, any, any of the developers here this evening?
I believe we do that, believe the applicants.
Okay, um, I'm just curious what the timeframe is for completion of this development.
You want to go ahead and do, and have the applicant do their. Any comments that they want to add? I don't know if that's the order that it should go, but usually.
We can add them right here.
Yeah, if that's, if that's okay. Usually they end up answering some of the questions that we.
Okay, sure, yes. That would be good for them to go ahead and speak and, and answer. Counselor Hughes question and maybe I got that mixed up that the council is supposed to ask their questions at the end of the public hearing, but not. Not wait till we get to the council business. I'm not sure how that.
I don't know what it is, but.
In the, okay, so. All right, we'll get.
Go ahead.
Uh, we don't really have a good timeframe at the moment. Um, just based on the economy and how it's going. And so at the moment, we don't have a really good timeframe, but as soon as we can hit the ground, we will probably.
Right.
Uh, so if I recall, that's there. He's a pretty hilly over there. Where's that? Did you guys do an erosion study at all?
We, we did, um, maybe.
Hi, I'm Dan Simmons of Simmons Engineering. Um, we did prepare an erosion control plan and we're in very. Close to being ready to submit that to D Q for a twelve hundred C permit.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, a, a lot of our, a, a lot of our subdivisions that are going in, um, have, uh, connection paths. From existing, uh, neighborhoods that, that will also go through. Is there. Do, is there any opportunity to, um, you know, make a connecting walking path, go from. You know, your proposed subdivision up to the subdivision abo- above that. Is there any opportunity there to?
I don't believe so. Elevations are pretty different around the whole area there. Um, I believe the only one would be Oakview. I don't believe we could do anything there. That wouldn't make sense. Well.
I was just going to follow up to Counselor Hughes's question, um, because I think you'd asked completion date, but you may have answered start date too. And I just want clarification there, uh, any, any. First plans for getting things going is, do you have a target from that standpoint?
Not, not at this time.
Okay, any more questions from council?
I'll just add that, um, the general, um, expiration timeline for a subdivision approval is four years. So if they weren't able to, um, come in with a plat submittal by then. Then they would need to request an extension. They can only extend up to two years beyond that four-year mark.
Yeah, thank you. Any last question? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing on this issue. And we will open the last public hearing that I have. I'm opening another public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three and ordinance amending title sixteen development of the Escada municipal code. Child care is only. So I'll turn it over to staff.
This will be, uh, for Taylor and it's the same, I will do the same routine. We'll let her get through her entire presentation. So jot down questions if you have them. And then, um, we'll go through the public hearing process with the council questions at the end of that.
Um, just one moment, Zoom is making me do an update. So I'm going to have Alan to pull my. Uh, presentation up from the drive. It's in the childcare folder. Okay.
Okay. Adoption hearings and it's CC, yep, city council. Sure. Okay, so this is, this will be up on the screen in a moment. This is the second public hearing for ordinance 2023-003. These are the childcare zoning amendments that we've talked about a few times now. You can go to slideshow. And start from the beginning. So this is, yeah, the second public hearing. The council can make the final decision tonight. The council approves this ordinance, it would then come back for a second reading on May 22nd. And so just to revisit the proposal. This proposal is to amend the development code, which is also called the zoning code. We also call it Title 16 of the Estacada Municipal Code. In order to, one, clarify the definitions of the different types of childcare providers that exist. And those clarifications would bring it more in line with the state's definitions of those types. And then, two, expand the areas where those different types of facilities are allowed in Estacada. So just a little background reminder, the the issue that we're trying to address here is that, as we know, there's a lack of childcare options and access in the Estacada area. It's really a regional kind of national issue at this point. Our sort of, you know, local government piece of that problem is that the definitions in our current code are not very clear. They conflict with the listings in the zones. And the current zone allowances are also unclear. They conflict with each other. They conflict with the definitions. And then they ultimately result in childcare facilities not being allowed in places that this group and the planning commission and staff agree would make sense for them to be allowed. So from there, kind of the timeline of events here, back in December, one of our local childcare providers attended the planning commission meeting and testified about all the barriers that they're experiencing trying to set up their services. And the barriers also that childcare users, you know, families are facing as well. The planning commission, that kind of started things off because the planning commission decided, yeah, the city should start working on this. They directed staff to start gathering information and scheduling the discussion, which resulted in that joint workshop that you all held with them in February. And at that workshop, we presented some options that the city could pursue to address some of those regulatory barriers, so code issues. And from that workshop, we got the direction to draft these amendments that are now in ordinance 2023003. And then most recently, on April 27th, we had the first public hearing on these amendments with the planning commission. And so we presented the ordinance. They held the public hearing, they invited testimony. The, there was testimony that recommended or, you know, identified this need for recreational facilities. And so this is explained a little bit more in the staff report, but the changes that the planning commission is now recommending to this proposal, they discussed how there is a demand locally for indoor recreational facilities that serve local youth. Many of local youth currently have to be driven out of Estacada to participate in like basketball tournaments, gymnastics, other indoor recreational activities. And so they found that if we allowed these desired facilities in appropriate areas, it would not only serve that need, it would also reduce the time and money that people are spending going elsewhere for that. And it would allow Estacada to enjoy the associated economic benefits of having that here in town. So their proposal is to allow those types of facilities, and I'll give you the definition here in a second, in the M1 Light Industrial, HC Highway Commercial, RC Riverfront Commercial, and MMU Mill Area Mixed Use Zones. So this is something that we can talk more about in detail. I assume we'll talk more about that in detail if there's any changes to that, but they're just recommending to allow those outright. Yeah, and so the updated ordinance reflects those added changes from the planning commission. There were no other changes to the the strictly childcare parts of the ordinance. Okay, so this is getting sort of scrunched. I'm sorry, you can't see that last line. So the basic components of the ordinance, as I mentioned, it establishes and clarifies those definitions for the types of facilities. And then it expands the areas where the childcare facilities can be allowed. And so I just wanted to remind everybody, when we talk about something being allowed outright, that means they, that business does not have to go through any special land use application process. They can just, you know, if they have to build something, they just get a building permit and then they just get a business license, right? They don't have to go through a subdivision or conditional use. If it is a conditional use in a zone, that means they do have to request a land use application approval. They have a public hearing with the planning commission. They have to meet certain development code requirements and justify how that use is not going to conflict with the surrounding uses or, you know, cause adverse impacts, basically. So the planning commission would get to approve or deny based on their application. Okay, the amendments to the definitions. We are creating three categories of childcare provider types. So a large facility would be anything caring for more than 16 children at a time. Small would be anything under 16 children at a time. And then the third category is youth support services facility. There's this long list of things that would fall under that category. Basically, you can think of it as, and we've been talking about it, as like shelter care and foster care type types of youth support services. And so this list that we got here is actually just taken verbatim from the state's definition for these types of facilities. So if there's any issue with that, you know, we can talk through that, but it is definitely helpful when our definitions align with the state's definition. So that's why all of that is listed in there. Okay, so now looking at what are the, what are the changes to the actual allowances in the zones that are included? So in our two lowest density residential zones, R1 and R2, the proposal is to allow small childcare facilities outright, youth support services outright, and then large childcare facilities, but only if they are in, they're sighted in a church or a school. And so context around that, a lot of the churches and schools are actually in the R1 zone already, so you wouldn't want to preclude them. You know, we talked about that being a really appropriate place for daycare to exist, so you wouldn't want to preclude that, so that's why that's listed in there. And then large childcare facilities that are not in a school or church would be a conditional use, so they would have to go through that public hearing process and justify how they're not going to conflict or have adverse impacts with the surrounding neighborhood. The next zone is the R3 multifamily zone. This is the solid orange on the map. I've got them circled up there. The proposal is currently to allow all three types of facilities outright. The next zone is the North City Residential Zone. This zone is sort of an interesting combo between our medium density residential zone and our multifamily, the R3 zone. Everything farther than 200 feet from Eagle Creek Road is more like our R2 medium density zone and everything within 200 feet of Eagle Creek Road is more like our R3 zone. And so we're basically proposing to treat childcare facilities within 200 feet of Eagle Creek, the same way we're treating it in R3 and outside of 200 feet, the same way we're treating it in R2. And then for the mixed use zones, I'm sorry, the formatting got looked better on my screen. In the mixed use zones, all of these zones, we're proposing the same thing. These are zones where both commercial and residential uses are allowed. Proposing to allow all three types of facilities outright in all of these zones. And then, as I mentioned, the planning commission is recommending allowing these indoor recreational facilities and play areas in the light industrial, highway commercial, riverfront commercial, and mill area mixed use zones. And so I have those kind of called out on the screen. Oh, this mouse is really difficult. Yeah, I won't even try. And so the the wording that is proposed here is very similar to what Clackamas County currently has. And so that's, that's where this language was pulled from. If there's any comments, we'd love to hear concerns or issues with that. But it is indoor recreational facilities and play areas for activities such as basketball, dance, gymnastics, martial arts, racquetball, skating, soccer, swimming, tennis, or similar. These facilities may be used for instruction, practice, and competitions. And then this last sentence says, health and fitness clubs are excluded. Excluded from this category. So that is the current version of the proposal. Anytime you are amending the development code, you have to follow certain approval criteria which are established in the development code, and so I'm just gonna zoom through those. The first one is that a development code amendment can only be initiated by the planning commission or the city council. Both entities, I guess you could think of it as planning commission, but at the joint workshop with both of you, we got sort of unanimous agreement to work on this ordinance. So that is good to go. The amendment procedure we are following, it first has to go to the planning commission for a public hearing and then goes to the city council for a public hearing and adoption. The findings, you need to make written findings justifying your decision. We'll write those for you. And then the limitation piece is actually not applicable. There's a clause in here about amendments that are requested by individual property owners, but that is not the case here. So the staff report goes into a little more detail about those. And then the next batch of approval criteria are the comprehensive plan policies that apply to whatever the proposal is. So, you know, depending on the content of the proposal, the topic of what it is you're trying to do, you look in your comprehensive plan and say, okay, which of the policies that are adopted here relate to this issue? And so all 12 of our comp plan chapters or goals are listed there on the left side of the screen and the original version of the proposal really only directly addressed policies under goal seven. So those are called out on the right. Sorry about the last one there. But those, those, these three policies that are called out, these are the ones that we find would be satisfied by adopting these amendments. So that first one is policy number two, invest in capital improvements. That's not what this proposal is doing, but and regulatory measures. So that is what this proposal would be doing to support employment areas. Policy 5C is work to attract new opportunities such as healthcare, tourism, and clean industries, including those utilizing green building practices and a focus on sustainable resources by supporting a diverse and skilled workforce who's capable of providing services and to green and sustainable industry sectors. I don't know if that's a typo, but that's a weird sentence, but supporting, supporting your workforce, basically. And then policy number six, position Estacada as a supportive and responsive business environment. And so all of these policies ultimately fall under this category of supporting your employment base, supporting local business and your workers and the employers that employ them. And then the additions that the planning commission added for those recreational facilities would actually also serve to satisfy another goal in our comprehensive plan, which is goal five, natural, cultural, and recreational resources and open spaces. It's a mouthful. But yeah, so this goal, the point of this goal is to, the first part is conserving open space and protecting natural and cultural resources. That's not really anything that we're doing with these amendments, but the second piece is satisfying the recreational needs of the citizens of Estacada and of the state and visitors. And so that's certainly something that those additional amendments would serve. Okay, so that should be it for approval criteria. So, as I said, the planning commission's recommendation is approval. We have met the approval criteria for development code amendments. The next steps, I think, would be public comment. Is that right? Looking for nods. And then we can go into discussion.
Whenever you all say we can. Mayor reads the statement.
No, I already read the statement, right?
About the.
Read the.
No.
Public hearing procedure?
Yeah, the statement about.
Okay, well now.
Favorite statement.
The statement of a hearing procedure. I will now close the city council meeting and open up the public hearing, which we've already done, so. To do, members of the council wish to sustain or declare ex parte, don't they? Okay. The council will now hear the staff report on the proposal, which we just did. Is there any correspondence regarding the application at all?
There was one additional piece of testimony that was received that I forwarded out to the council earlier today. It was sort of a repeat of testimony that we've received before from Julie Searing or Siling from the Early Childhood Committee. And it was just an expression of support for these amendments. There weren't any recommended changes from her, but just kind of reiterating that the amendments would help alleviate some of those barriers that they had talked about.
Okay, great. Okay, I will now read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record as the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to an issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, and the applicant, that's, so we're doing it. If you have speaker request form, and I have one on this particular, it would be Katie Eave.
Hello, thank you. Good, how are you guys tonight?
Good.
Thank you for letting me come and speak. I just wanted to come speak on behalf of the childcare. I think all the amendments are great. Me and my family are actually working on opening a childcare here in Estacada. I have 20 years' experience with my family and we love children. We have five ourselves and we really support this and hope that you guys are in support of it. We want to bring all of our experiences to Estacada. I grew up in Beaver Creek. So I love, love it out here, grew up knowing a lot of people in the area. And we're just really excited to be a part of your community and hope to get a lot more people involved. And yeah. Oh, thank you, guys.
We thank you. All right, do I have any online? Does the staff wish to add anything at this time? Okay, this time I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council.
And excuse me, mayor, I believe the first public, well, the second public hearing, we had the subdivision application. We need to reopen that and read that statement about the the evidence and the appeal to Luba.
Okay.
And, and open it to the, I thought we did that, but.
We did that.
Yeah, we just, we just didn't, you didn't read the statement and we need to officially read that statement. So we'll have to reopen that public hearing for subdivision application 2023-01-S.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Subdivision, which one was it? The second one?
Yes.
Application for twenty twenty-three dash zero one, and I will read the public hearing procedure. Hey, I will now close the city council, meaning and open the public hearing. Do any of the members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte? Is there any correspondence regarding the application?
We don't, I don't have any correspondence. I do believe that Council McRoy wants to make.
I don't have to declare ex parte, but I have a working relationship with the engineer for this project on a different project through my work. I don't have any financial gains or anything from the project that's coming before us.
Yeah, okay, great. We appreciate that. Okay, is there, okay, I will now read the statement about the evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final. Eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised. With sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide. Sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, so we did the applicant, we've done all that stuff, right? And we've had public comment.
Right, do we have any, do we have any public comment?
I don't think we do.
Okay, all right.
Okay, at this time, I will now close the public.
Thank you.
And that is done, right?
Yes. Got to cross all the Ts and dot all.
So now we're back in the city council meeting. And we will enter into council business this time. No more reading of any.
Right.
Things that I might have missed. That's a lot.
That was a lot. Thank you, mayor.
Yeah. Okay, we have first on the list, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one two, a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the supplemental budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one two, a resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the. Supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
All right, do I have a second? First and second, all those in favor say aye. Okay. Next, I have subdivision application twenty twenty-three dash zero one, South Ginseng. You've all heard everything on it.
Move to prove his red.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Up for first and second, all those in favor say aye. Okay. Third thing I have is an ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three. An ordinance amending title sixteen, development of the Estacada municipal code, childcare zoning. Just have that discussion.
Yeah, I need to, I need to discuss if you think on the.
Okay, so we've got questions. Let's break down far in.
Just one quick question. I didn't see anything addressed in there. Maybe I'm missing it, Taylor, about R two, the amendment star two. I didn't see that in there.
Yes, there are in the presentation or in the ordinance.
In, in our packet.
Let me just make sure here.
I just said if it was your intent to change that, I didn't.
Because there definitely should be. Oh, I know why that is. I remember I was looking through this and I was like, where's the R two stuff? Our. R two code, let me pull this up.
Anything that's allowable in R one and some.
Yep, and I can just read it for the record real quick, but basically. It says exactly that. Any residential or any non-residential use that's allowed as a conditional use in. R one is allowed as a conditional use in R two. Or outright, any non-residential use is allowed outright. So let me just double check that real quick, though. Okay, use is permitted outright. The first one is a use permitted outright in the R one zone. So that's good. For the small childcare facilities and then similarly for conditional uses permitted. A use permitted as a conditional use in the R one zone is allowed as a conditional use in the R two zone. So. It's not shown in the ordinance because it doesn't need to be because it automatically happens.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Scared me.
I had a couple of things I wanted to discuss on here. The first one is down off of Lake Shore. There's a big chunk in here that goes straight into. From between Dogwood Road and Groove Road. That's included in that outright allowed. And I wanted to see about possibly getting it. You have a map up there you're pulling up? I'll wait if you are.
Yeah, I can pull it up here.
You have to zoom in if I see it. Oh, I think you might have had it there a second ago.
There we go.
Okay, so yeah, that, that brown section there, that's all residential and that hasn't, that's the only section that really has an outright. Use in there. I wanted to see if we, the council would be, would consider to changing that section into a conditional use. So that we can at least, just like the rest of the residential in our city, we have the ability to. You know, have that consideration rather than then dropping a large facility in the next to someone's house.
Would we have to rezone that area to, in order to do that?
No, so the way that you could write it, similar to how like in the North City Residential Zone, there are certain uses allowed within two hundred feet of. Eagle Creek, but not outside of two hundred feet. You could do something like that where it says, I think I wrote up there. It's, it's allowed outright anywhere in the R three zone except. South and west of, you know, south of Highway two twenty-four and west of whichever street you wanted to pick as the boundary. I just drew. Dogwood because that's the one that we talked about earlier.
Yep, that makes sense. It's, it's kind of the cutoff there if you look at the map.
So you would, yeah, it'd be easy to write that in to the actual listing in the zone.
And, and what's, what's the concern?
It's, it's all, it's all houses in there. And if you look at the rest of the, the map, it's all anywhere houses, we have conditional use. But like everywhere else where it's like automatically allowed, that's, that's not really in a middle residential area. So it just gives us the ability to. To say if someone has some concerns on there that are legitimate, that we feel legitimate, we have the ability to say no. Otherwise, it can just go and just drop a large facility in there without any.
And that's for the large.
Yeah, that's the large. So it would just turn it from green to, to yellow on this map here.
And, and it seems like the, the Planning Commission had some concerns on and off about that as well, too. I think. Through discussion, the, the. And, and I'm not opposed, not opposed, the, the. Realist, the ability of someone to drop a large facility is pretty narrow. Because of the state's requirements for what a large, you know, to fit that, but if, if something were to happen.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep it consistent on there and, you know, never know if someone can buy two pieces of property or something or whatever, but. Also, if you notice on there, the, where the community center is, that's unconditional use, but it would make sense to allow that an outright. There for that one. Just to kind of make it whether we don't have an island there for it and it's this community center. I mean, it could potentially become a. Childcare facility and they have large rooms underneath, they could turn, convert that into things, so. So that, that's the other one I'd recommend. And then you will come and you kind of went through the, the amend, the proposed amendments from the. From the. Planning Commission. I had one, one issue with that. Firstly, it was a little confusing to everything on there, so I just wanted to make a recommendation to make it simple. Basically, anywhere that we have the allow all types outright. Which is the green section on the map that we had in our packets. That we should just make that match the recommendations for the facilities. Because that's kind of the same thing pretty much, and I think that keeps it simpler. The one thing I don't agree with was allowing it in the light industrial, which is the industrial park. I don't think having kids and. Youth running around in the industrial park is a smart, safe idea. Because a good, the good example was given to me earlier from Melanie and that was the like whippersnappers. That's technically in an industrial area in Sandy, but if you look at that, that's not used as an industrial park, really. That's more of like a shopping center. They have restaurants in there. They have. Bars, they have a gym in there, they have the whippersnappers, there's stores in there. So it's more of like a. Shopping center that's kind of in an industrial area. So whereas in their main industrial area, you don't see anything like that. And that's because you have trucks and forklifts and other things and things backing up and big boats moving around in that area and. I mean, you put a childcare facility in there and some kids not paying attention runs out in the road, it could potentially be bad, so. That's why I'm against having it in that area just for safety. I think it potentially could be an issue. That's in the industrial area.
I have a question, and I guess this would be directed towards Council McRoy, being that you, you work in that industrial area. Is, is there a lot, I mean, I know you can only answer for one. One business there, but I mean, do you think a childcare facility in that, in that industrial area would benefit the employees that. Work in that, you know, in the industrial area?
Did I miss that? That was in the light industrial for the childcare. I don't.
That's what they wanted, the planning commission wanted to change, is put like the playing facilities and sports facilities and things.
Okay. Okay, I got it.
So. I was just a moot point on that part, right? No question still, or what, your question was about the benefit for childcare?
Yeah, so what, basically what I'm reading here is it says childcare allowance recommendations on this map and it says all, all types allowed outright. And everything in green there, it says all types allowed outright.
Yeah, that's what I was. They, yeah, the one that they're referring to is not in this map because it was done afterward in an email.
Yeah, sorry, we, we didn't update the, that map with the planning commission's recommendations. And we should have noted that on the map and I apologize.
Okay.
And the only experience I have with those type of facilities is I, I do. I participate in the youth sports here locally, football, baseball and stuff like that. And we do commute, like we commute to five, well, I won't say their name, but we commute to facilities in Gresham. And other areas in Portland and they're in a, a mixed area. But there's not outdoor facilities in those areas typically. Things like, I don't know, charity might be going to some dance places or something like that, but typically it's inside, so not, not much. I wouldn't want kids outdoor, outdoors running around on the streets down there, even with the traffic that's in place, but. Indoor facilities, I, I haven't had that experience.
So just to bring up the whippersnapper thing, just because I coach at that gym right next door to. In that facility, it is kind of a mixed use. So there's whippersnappers and then our gyms right next door. And then we also have, it is some kind of light industrial. So sometimes we do have forklifts running, like in the parking lot. Because of where whippersnappers is situated, we've never had any issues with kiddos or things. I think the concern just becomes parking with parking getting too full because there's so many. People going into whippersnappers or if it's like a busy gym day, but. But as far as the. Safety, it had, it hadn't been an issue and we had, I mean, we've never heard any complaints, but. And it seemed to be a, a good spot for kids and families because we are across the street from Fred Meyer. So there's, there's that. But, yeah, so I don't know.
And you did say that was a mixed use, right?
It is a mix, yeah, yeah.
Now, our, our code, as it reads, I think we don't have in our industrial, we can't have retail, we can't have restaurants, so.
Right.
Doesn't that kind of? Go against that? I mean, she's talking about a mixed use facility where ours is not. So I would wonder if that kind of sends a message, if we're not allowing those and then we allow this.
That, well, I would say. Like, for instance, in Clackamas, there's like the warehouse areas and because you kind of need a larger. A warehouse facility for these type of activities. And so it's hard to situate them in a more of a commercial zone. But we, yeah, we don't necessarily have the mixed, we, we don't allow mixed use out there. It definitely is industrial. But parking would be something probably to take into consideration, off-street parking so that kiddos aren't running, you know, down the street.
Right.
All that. But yeah.
I was gonna say during the planning commission, it was brought up that there were other areas as well, too. I thought Malala was brought up as another one that had. These type of facilities in a similar zoned area is what we were talking about. And then you'd mentioned restaurants in there, but there's, they don't have restaurants in the sandy one.
It, you, they're used to. There was, there was one there. There was like a little brew pub in there. There isn't now. Now it's like axe throwing, but I think you can get beer or whatever in there, but yeah.
But this was, this was discussed. Really with a lot of. Support, I would say during the planning commission, you know, they had some other folks, other parents that, that drove long ways to get their kids into similar places as well, too. So. You know, once, once this came up, it definitely had discussion, but it was something that had. Very strong support among the planning commission.
Yeah, so I mean, I get what you're saying as far as like the larger buildings and there are places to put larger buildings, but not just currently what's in that area. I mean, you think about what could potentially go into an industrial area and you have kids in there, you could have extremely loud device, loud things happening. There could be things that are, you know, chemical or whatever else in the area that potential could cause risk. I can't, I don't, can't think that far what might be there. But it's an industrial area. This seems like a putting a. Something that would have kids and youth and. Where the one, for example, whippersnappers, you have people that don't have kids, that have cars. That walk their kids and stuff to that. And for people that may not have transportation, there's no public transportation in there. And they may be walking themselves to a facility in there that's going to be on the roads. It just potentially causes a risk. And I think that that's what I'm trying to think of is what's currently there, what could potentially be there. It's an industrial zone. I mean, it's. Normally a place you don't put kid facilities and just general practice. And so that's my concern.
Yeah, I'm somewhat familiar with this. I think the trend started because warehouses were getting converted into indoor soccer. And then empty warehouses started getting converted into other things too that don't. I mean, not gyms or anything like that, but just child play type of facilities. It's probably going to happen with pickleball. Because neighbors have problems with the noises. It's, it's not uncommon to allow it if, if you're familiar with Topgolf in Hillsboro, that's actually in technically in an industrial area as well. So I, I think that, that. From my perspective, the biggest concern would be making sure there is adequate off-street parking. And I, I don't know that a lot of people would walk, given where your facility is, but to the extent that you have empty warehouses. Then I could see those getting. Bought purchased and, and converted into that type of facility. And it's, it's just really hard to find large enough lots. Anywhere else in a city to be able to have like multiple indoor soccer games or indoor sports teams for kids. So that, that's why I think that. Other cities have done it because they don't want to give up the commercial space. And to the extent they have the dirt and the commercial, the lots aren't large enough to actually meet the, the need.
I was just gonna suggest that you, you do have to weigh the risk and the benefits. However, the other zones that are available. Oh, the map went away. The riverfront commercial, the mill mixed use and the highway commercial aren't. They don't provide a lot of opportunity at this point, whereas the industrial campus would perhaps. And so if you drop that out. There's a potential that it's not really going to help that much. But that's not to say that something couldn't go in on that, in the highway commercial or. That there's one vacant lot in the riverfront commercial, mill mixed uses. Who knows when? And so, I mean, I would just, I would weigh that, the, the cost, the risk and the benefit. And the timeline of what's available in those zones.
One more question. Yeah, I, I had to disagree with the not being a, a sufficient space. Mill property aside, there's probably at least a dozen places on that, up and down the highway there. From right across the road from River Mill, the area where workforce now and all those properties in there up around. Where they're putting their childcare facilities, giant field there for a warehouse, great place to put an extra childcare facility. There's a, there's a slew of places that are large. Properties to put it. So there's ample location that's much safer. And what Peter was talking about there was more of adult facilities, a pickleball facility, a basketball place. That's generally. He was referring to a more like recreational adult, much different than children. And when we, what I heard, what I see up there, that's generally more kids, youth. When I take my daughter to martial arts and, and, and Sandy. The kids come out and they literally, they run across the parking lot and yes, they run across the road. There's adults that constantly stop them, but for running across the road, that's a busy road right there, too. So it's going to happen either way, someone's going to park on the street. I'm just trying to keep the safety of the kids there and there's plenty of other places to go. We can always adapt it later to add it if we find out that all those spots are filled up. But let's err on the, on the side of caution, give safety first and then, then look at changing it if there's a problem later. On, I just, I see a potential issue happening there. We're trying to do my best to stop it, so.
So how are we looking at? It sounds like it's not going to be just a motion to approve it as presented. So what are the changes that? What's the motion going to be?
I, I, I think it'd be good to get council consensus on this. I, I'm. I I've, I'm, I'm in support of it as presented, um, I I heard the testimony, uh, heard the discussion of the the planning commission. I I understand counselor Licky suggests your uh concerns as well too, I I do. Um, I'd hate to have something like that uh happen out there, I I really would. I I think the need here in Estacada is great. We've got a lot of families right now driving a considerable amount of time to get out of town to go to a facility like that. Where we've got a place that we could put something like that and and get immediately immediate turnaround as well too. Um, so we can keep families here uh and not having to drive to Tiger or Malala or Sandy for those kind of events as well too. So uh my consensus is as presented.
Um, I guess if we just go around, um, my consensus is as presented, but also adding counselor Licky's first proposal. With that, with that change on on Dogwood, um, adding that, um, I'm, I'm. I'm, I would really like to just move forward and add the facilities for. Have that that opportunity be there for us to have, you know, some sort of like youth facility or something in industry right now. I just working with youth sports programs, I just, it's just such a need. And I I know safety would be a concern, but I just, I know how much of a need it is in our community right now. But I do want to support that little change that um counselor Lick he first proposed, if we could add that in there, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I I am too.
Could I ask a clarifying question on that addition? Um, which I think is a perfectly good idea. Um, would large childcare facilities in that little section? Where did I put this? Um, in that Dogwood section, would large childcare facilities instead of being allowed outright? Um, be allowed as a conditional use or would they just be prohibited in that?
Match the yellow with the.
Match the also, so it would be conditional use, is that consistent? Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Oh, is that comfortable over here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the same boat with charity or counselor Hughes. In supporting the changes to the Dogwood section for the childcare facilities and the rest as presented.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. Make sure I'm on the right one here. Move to approve ordinance two zero two three dash zero zero three and ordinance amending title sixteen, development of the Estacada municipal code. Uh, childcare zoning with the change that we uh bring the Dogwood. Section, what would it be in alignment with? As a conditional use.
With the R two zone.
With the R two.
Yep, understood, got it.
Second, second.
Okay, first and second, all those papers say aye? All those opposed?
No.
Good, motion passes, thank you. Okay, next on the list, I have Community Heart and Soul.
Okay, we have some guests with us tonight and I'm going to give a little brief background. Before we introduce them, but in the fall of twenty twenty-two, Jane Reed and Bill Flood. Reached out to city staff to introduce the Community Heart and Soul program as a possibility for Estacada. Um, and just a quick description off their website, Community Heart and Soul is a resident-driven process that engages the entire population of a town and identifying what they love most about their community, what future they want for it and how to achieve it. Developed and field-tested over a decade in partnership with over a hundred small cities and towns across America. Community Heart and Soul is a proven process for engaging the community and shaping its future. Um, I was unsure if there would be volunteer interest to the level that's going to be required for this program, which takes eighteen to twenty-four months to complete. And after a few introductory discussions and meetings, there is a group that a group of volunteers who are excited about the program and want to carry it forward. So at the next council meeting, they want to come and um the the launch team, as we're calling them. Uh, would like to bring a formal request to the council to for support to the program. Cause that is required by the Community Heart and Soul program because it's very important to have the community leaders on board with this initiative. Before it goes forward and so I wanted to make sure that um any questions that you have are able to be answered. I didn't want to put them in or you in an awkward spot of not being completely prepared to really um say yes, that we can support this or we still have concerns. Um, so quickly, what does formal support look like? It would be a resolution that you would pass. And we'd want to, the city would want to commit to representation on the heart and soul team by a staff member or and or elected officials that could participate. Um, we would provide meeting space at city hall or other community rooms as available. We could assist in publicizing information about the project through the city website and social media. And then we'd also want to provide um uh matching funds for grants that the project may receive. It could possibly be up to twenty thousand dollars uh for the first year and then they might come back in the second year to ask for an additional one. But they are, the Community Heart and Soul program does have a seed grant. Um, and the Ford Family Foundation is very supportive and there's other organizations that they might speak to also. Um, that would want to provide some funding. Um, it's not run by city staff, they would have at least a part-time person that is a paid staff for this to keep everything pulled together. And that's, that's part of what the funding would go for. Um, but it's, it's very grassroots, community-driven and it's a very economical way to do this type of a a program. Because the alternative would be, um, if the city ran it, we'd probably hire a consultant to do this public outreach. Then it is very government-driven, government process versus community grassroots. And it could range conservatively speaking, anywhere from eighty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to get a consultant to do this type of work over a couple of years. Um, I don't know if it would take, maybe it'd only take them a year to do it, but um, so it's. I feel like it's a, it's a great program, but I know there might be other questions that you have. I do have a short video to share with you, it's like, it's about a minute and a half from some of the launch team members. And then we have Bill Flood, who's the Oregon Community Heart and Soul Coach and Community Development Consultant. And we have a few of our launch team members, Lily Shaver, Peggy Ailes Hartwig and Jane Reed. And they're here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about the program, yes.
Should I declare anything? I've been part of many of the meetings, sitting on those.
Maybe this, let's just see a show of hands, who's been able to attend a meeting that that we've had. So you're familiar, so counselor Prokop and counselor Strobel are both familiar um with it. I think everybody was invited, but it just depends on how your schedules roll out, it's how it works out, so. Yeah, neither, so, okay, I want to show this short video and then we'll have the team come up to the microphone. And then if there's questions or if you want to get more feedback from them.
I'm Emily Hamilton and I think Community Heart and Soul would be a great fit for Estacada right now. It will help merge the old and the new residents and in general gather stories from the community and continue to build on what we love about Estacada. Hello, my name is Lily Shaver and I think Heart and Soul would be a great opportunity for Estacada. Uh, would be a great way to bridge the gap between the new and the old residents in Estacada. Um, and one of the best ways to do that, I think, would be to um bring back such events like the Timber Festival and the Summer Celebration and the Big Bang uh fireworks display. And um those events could um help the new and old residents mingle together. And I'm very excited to see what Heart and Soul could potentially do.
Hi, my name is Corbin Stanton and I am a student here in Estacada. And Community Heart and Soul is something that brings communities together and allows more public participation in local politics and in events.
Uh, my name is Anne Johnson and I work with Toros Santos, the nonprofit here in Estacada and community. I also grew up in this community and came back to it after a long stint in Southern California, where it really lacked community. So I'm excited about this opportunity for people that are new to this space and also have been here a long time to connect and to share uh what they value the most, what they love about this place and how they want to see it grow in the future. Um, so I want to be part of that conversation and as an organization to represent families that we work with in the schools and in the community, to have their voices heard and to develop new leaders, new voices in the conversation and make sure that we're all at the table together. So you have an opportunity to support this and I hope you will.
All right, if the, if you want to come up to the podium. I don't know if there's specific questions that folks have. Bill is our, kind of our technical expert on this. Um, and I had told them that we try to keep this to ten minutes at the most because they knew we had such a a full schedule. But I did want to be able to provide time for you to give me feedback or ask questions on the program so that we would be ready when they want to come and ask for support. If that's um something that you feel like we're kind of moving in that direction and could give support, I'll have them come. If we're not there yet, then I didn't want to. I don't want to invite them yet if we're not ready. So are there any questions or do you have anything that you'd like to share about your experience so far? Yeah, do you want to say something, Peggy?
I went to this first meeting and I was on the kind of leery about would this be sustainable? Would people really get involved in and stay involved in it? After looking at the process and we've gone through the process for three months now, I am really gung ho on this. I really see this as an opportunity for us to develop new leadership, new volunteers. And bring all these new people coming in and make us a better, better community because of that.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yes, um, I think Heart and Soul will be, would be really good for Estacada. Um, in the last couple of years, we've been lacking in events. Um, and lack of volunteers for the Summer Celebration and the Timber Festival. And those are big events that um bring the community together. And we have had so much growth in Estacada, so many new families coming in. And I'd really like to see the old and the new members of the community gathered together and find some common ground.
Thanks, Lily. One of the things that really excites me about Heart and Soul and and it it, one of the things that builds on the Ford Family Foundation's work with the, with the community a number of years ago on our leadership development, it's a very positive approach. It involves everyone, I mean, that's one of its um, it basic tenants is that to involve everyone, to focus on what matters most and to play the long game, it's apolitical. It just expands and expands with very positive senses of what our values are as a community. What, what we value, what we want to become. Um, so I don't know, it just is, and and the process is so, has been developed over twenty years. They've got this process that is adapted differently for each community, but that works and that is uh. And it's fun, so anyway, I think this is something that it would be a perfect time for Estacada to explore. And it uh in a painless way, I think it'll be a painless thing, so. And Bill, do you want to say anything?
I don't think I need to say anything. I'm, that little video, so we've had, we've been meeting since November. And that little video pretty much says it of these guys that have been meeting every month to kind of march down this road of does, is this possible for Estacada, how could it work? And then I just went outside with my phone and these four unscripted, just like nailed it. Why it's important to them, so. I don't want to take up more of your time, yeah, what, what are the questions?
Have you implemented this program in any local communities that we'd be uh that we'd be familiar with? And what were the outcomes in those communities after the program went through?
No Oregon communities have used Oregon Heart and Soul. And that's part of the excitement of this is, so as a community development consultant for forty years, I've been tracking with this process in other states and so is the Ford Family Foundation. So I got really interested a few years ago, became a a coach uh of this process. And then immediately contacted Ford, who actually talked with before I became a coach. And they're interested in supporting um Community Heart and Soul in Oregon communities. So, no, it's not.
Can you, can you share the outcomes at some of the places in other states where the program's been implemented?
Victor, Idaho, um Cortez, Colorado are the western ones. Most of them seem to be like a whole bunch in Georgia, South Carolina, a bunch in Pennsylvania.
We could, we can send you a list.
No, I'm just curious what the outcomes, like what, what, what was the measurable outcome at the end of the program?
So.
I could speak to that too in a minute.
Yeah, yeah, oh, that's right, so Melanie has spoken with parallel city managers or people about this. So to me, this um increased social capital, increased engagement of people. Uh, who um run for local office, volunteers. There's this process also identifies, it sounds kind of touchy feely. And it is in that it's all about involving everybody. It's not in that there is a very kind of strict process for how to gather stories from everybody. That becomes data, that then that data um fuels a set of five to seven core values that most that are um value statements. That most communities that adopt the, these, those value statements then are the values of the comp plan. They, they're in city hall and they guide the, the work of the city. Uh, but the other thing is an action plan results from it.
Thank you.
So those are, yeah.
I I was just going to chime in here too, you, this has moved from the east coast over to here. And what really struck me is the uh, what, what sparked this, what started this originally was a small town. I think someone on the planning commission said, we're not going out to the people, asking them what they want their city to look like. And I can't tell you how many times we have said that on this group here uh in our commissions as well. To planning commission says it quite often as well, and this is what the basis of that is. Let's go out, identify how to get out to the people. That's where the process that I think Jane had mentioned, that they've got a process to reach people. And then that helps uh the group get organized in getting those input. Inputs from the folks, from the people of Estacada and the surrounding areas as well too. Um, to say, what do we want, what do they want, what do we want Estacada to look like?
And the founder of the process um was Lyle, it's personally important, Orton. Who has a family foundation, the Orton Family Foundation. And he is the proprietor, the founder and proprietor of the Vermont Country Store. So their um charitable work is this process, if you will. So it was starting by a business person who saw the community not coming together and said, there's got to be a better way. Also Melanie.
Um, so you said that uh no other cities in Oregon have this, how many have you presented to? That chose not to move forward with it, are we the first one you're presenting to in Oregon?
No, well, um, you're the first one that went this far. I'm, I'm speaking with other communities because we're just spreading the word and seeing which communities want to do this.
So no cities have had it presented to them and turned it down?
Right, right, the um. Um, I'm like a grand drawn and a set of communities in the valley over there came close. But their, their capacity to kind of hang together as a community and go through something like this, they just said. They want to do this, but we just can't right now. So that's the closest.
Opportunity for time for Estacada to do this because we have an influx of a lot of people that are moving into us. And if we can tap into that resource and get them involved, it's going to give us new leadership, new community input. And just make us a better place to live.
Um, I don't have a question, I just wanted to uh testify on the success of the Ford Family Foundation program. Uh, three of us sitting at the table or at these tables are graduates from that Ford Family Leadership Program. Uh, myself, Paul Strobel and Melanie Wagner all went through that program and it was a great program, huh? Oh, and Sadie and Jane, Jane was our, Jane was the coach the year that I was involved. Um, but um, I, I really wanted that, that program to continue in Estacada, but it has, it has its lifespan. And I think this is the, this is a great next step for, you know, for the city of Estacada, for the community of Estacada. So I'm in full support of, you know, hearing more, going further. Um, so yeah, you, you've gotten, you've got mine, my support.
I'm just curious how this would look, um, if this was supported by council. So is this going to be sort of like, is this going to run like a committee or commission? Being that you had asked that there be city representation or somebody from the council to be present at your meetings. So I'm just, I'm kind of curious what, what that all looks like.
So Community Heart and Soul asks that any, any community that adopts this process that this, the municipality. that this the municipality adopts a resolution that says we're in support of this. So that formal resolution is important to go forward. Also for funding, the there's a $10,000 seed grant available for communities that launch this. And you've got to have that for the seed grant. I think what Melanie Melanie said is super important that this is not a municipally led project. It's civically led. There will be a nonprofit sponsor fiscal agent. So if we go to, for example, Ford Family Foundation, if we go to foundations for funding to fund it. It'll go through the fiscal agent, but it'll be in close alignment with the with the city. Does that help? So there'll be a core group. There'll be a core group. What? Right now we have a launch group. That's been
There's more.
Right. That's been meeting. I've been super impressed with the number of people that continue to meet monthly. So this launch group was going to morph probably next month into a core team. Who's going to say, yes, we're going to see through this through the eighteen months process. And it'll, yeah, and then there'll be subcommittees and you know that. But that'll be the major kind of organizing structure.
Well, I I just want to clarify something because I heard a call plan amendment, which for a lawyer or magic words. And that would have to be a city-led program. And that would have to be done in complete coordination with state DLCD staff. And it would take a lot of my time and in Taylor's time or working on your we have, we have a lot of codes we probably need to get through before we do a call plan amendment. So I just that isn't to say that this couldn't lead to some complaint amendment, but if the if you guys wish to amend your call plan. I don't know that it it would have to be a city-led, city-organized publicly noticed process. It can't happen through a, as far as I know, it can't happen through a third-party facilitator. We will bring in third-party facilitators, but it it wouldn't be a community-led.
And I wasn't suggesting that this do that, but this process is often like the community engagement. You can tap into this for the community engagement piece of a parallel comp planning, either done before or after whatever. It can coordinate that.
And I would say Peter brings up a good point because we have on our plates for the next year or so, he and Taylor and the planning team will be working on updates to the code. We don't have time to lead an initiative or even to manage a consultant to do this. So that having the community kind of instigate this program and start reaching out to people and do like the public outreach portion of it. To get people involved again would be helpful and we wouldn't want to not be involved. That's that's the thing is that that's why we would want probably some somebody from the community development department would would usually attend the meetings and anybody, you know, on council who wants to attend to stay in touch, stay in tune with what's going on. And we'd have them come back and and report out. But they would be, they would be doing the boots-on-the-ground work, which that would fit what we can do right now. Is I don't know if Taylor wants to weigh in on that at all or.
I think I would just agree with everything that all three of you just said. Yeah, they they wouldn't, if we were going to update the comp plan, that would be a city process. The huge value that I see in the heart and soul process is, yeah, that community engagement piece. Which if you're updating, if you're doing a whole comp plan update, the community engagement required for that just because your comp plan addresses so many different things, you want to basically have a visioning process if you're going to update your comp plan. That's what they're talking about doing. And so the city's involvement in that, what what I would want to see if the city was involved in that is making sure that the the feedback that they're gathering in that process gets to us in a way that we can hold on to that for whenever we are ready in a couple of years to update our comp plan.
To the extent that this involves land use or land use laws, I just think it's really important that the community understand how constrained the city is through state laws. So I mean, we talk about, if we're talking about a comp plan, we're talking about bill, uh, vision values of a place. And that's something that Estacada has looked at over the years. That's part of why you adopted your act about the recreation and and all of those things. Because the that was community-led. That was something that the community came out and said to Clarkness County Tourism and others. This is something we want to bring here and that's why it was so successful. But once we start talking about land use laws, we get into a really kind of tricky place. And so I would just want to make sure that people understand that something like active act outdoor recreation or creating opportunities for families or all of those things. Those are things we can do. But if if we start getting into specific land users owning things. That's not, I mean, it's, they may become very frustrated.
Just because it's getting late. One question is from Melanie, what are we looking to come out of this? And second part is, it sounded like we need more understanding of what from a legal standpoint, what is this going to be before we can do much with it? But what are we, whatever, is this just a presentation? Are we supposed to
Yeah, this, I just wanted to know if you had questions, kind of like this discussion, and I would like to wrap it up too, because I know it's getting late. But to see if there is a general support for this at this time, there is a group of of volunteers who are interested in carrying it forward. There would be good value and they'll come up with these through communication and story gathering and turning that into data to to come up with these statements, heart and soul statements for Estacada, what the community values, what they like. Because a lot of times we hear a lot about what people don't like. But what do we like? And that tells us what our what our values are. And then to answer Counselor McElroy's question, there oftentimes there's an action plan that comes out at the end. That's not just a list of here, here you go, city, here's what you need to do now. But it's sometimes it resides at the library or it can, it can be broken up into different, this is for nonprofits to pick. They can pick and choose what they want to do off this list. Or, you know, maybe the library or the schools or it's, so it's, it is a, it's a little nebulous. I think it's gonna, I think it will, I have confidence that it can turn out to be a great thing. The couple of city managers I talked to back on the east coast spoke very highly of it. They said it was great, A, because it comes from the community. And not, it's not government-driven. That was the the one, especially the one person kept repeating that, that it's when you do, when government does something, it's always from government. We have our process, we go through our process. If you really want to hear from the community, the community needs to do that and pull it together, the information. So I think it could be a benefit, but I also just didn't want to. I didn't, I didn't want to have them come and make an ask without having you guys be able to chew on it or ask me questions over the next couple of weeks. I mean, like Peter said, it's not, it's not involving a comp plan update. It's just public outreach. Community visioning, pulling people together on this handout that they provided, it kind of gives you some benefits that come out of it. Pride and confident confidence grow in the town, civility and respect increase, residents feel more connected to one another. Volunteerism increases, new young leaders emerge and it kind of goes on down the list. But there was the it, it led to more vibrant community and more connected community from the the two city managers that I talked to.
I think the key thing I was asking that for is because it's unlike our city attorney had some reservations about it. And it sounds like some of the things I heard from them are a little bit, that's kind of gave him a little bit of reservations. Before I could think I can get behind something like this, especially if we're going to put money towards it, I think we need to have a better understanding of and make sure they have a better understanding too of the legal pieces, what they can't can't do as far as what they might want to do. And then, you know, and then tell Peter, I think is has a confidence in it. I'd be, I'd be a little worried just to make sure that he understands what what their intentions are and and everything and the communication's good before I could myself.
I think that from a land use perspective. It need, anything that would, we would want to use would need to be acknowledged. Is we can't use anything that they would come up with until it's acknowledged by DLCD staff. So I mean, that that technically, that doesn't mean that it wouldn't benefit the community to get together and to talk about Estacada vision and values or any of that. Oregon just has a very unique land use laws. And so I could see how other in other states, this might be something that helps them determine like next steps as far as growth and things of that nature. Were different. So I, I mean, the the benefit, I guess, is that we would get to find out how it works in Oregon or how it's different in Oregon and and the, I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned. Because I've had things that weren't acknowledged before. We just couldn't use them with the state, but I just would want to make sure that everybody understands what we can and can't do because I I heard the words amend your call plan. And that's not, that's not something this process could do.
So maybe Peter and Jane and Bill and I should sit down and and talk before, and if we come, if we come to an agreement on clarity on that. We'll make sure that we do before we come back to you.
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, it's 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 on the paper here. I just this, I don't know if this will clarify or make it more confusing, but the resolution that the city of Rockland in Maine put forth, I mean, it's, it says down there, so using them to evaluate decisions regarding future policies, strategic plans, operational issues and community investment. The city council advises the city manager to use the community statements in evaluating and recommending policy decisions or operational involvements in the city. And that in utilizing utilizing these state, these statements, it is understood that the city may weigh and apply them according to prevailing context, context and circumstance. So I mean, I think, you know, a resolution like that would kind of, you know, as long as we worded it to where, you know. We're going to take it into consideration, but it's not going to be. Don't forget, they asked for $10,000 and that's my, that's where I got my pause at. And that's why I want to make sure before we commit $10,000. I I heard it's
They do have a seed grant, but we would want to be able to support the and do provide matching funds.
May not even be needed.
It might not.
See that the city would offer that is good for other funders to see that they may not be touched. And can I just jump in saying that I don't think it ever was our intention to make, to think that we that that this group was, that its goal was to amend your comp, the comp plan. It's just to inform your thinking, everybody's thinking. The school district, I mean, the school district is has representatives on this board. I mean, lots of people around the community. They are looking to hear like, people are wanting to hear what people think. And I think that is what what this will do more than say, and we want to change this or we're going to affect land use. Going to show anything like that. But so I just wanted to, I don't know if that clarifies anything, but that's the intent.
I might have been the person who brought that up, at least in a previous conversation, because thinking about this process, that perked my, I think about our complan every day. And there are parts of it that are, you know, terribly outdated. And if we were going to update our complan, you want robust community engagement to inform that. So that's the value that in my role, I would see as a great value for the city if this process did get done. But the process itself wouldn't update the comp plan. And we wouldn't be required to update our comp plan if we did participate in this process.
So why don't we just, we'll do a little more research to answer questions, any legalities, anything like that. Prior, probably we'll be able to bring that back to you at the next meeting. But I'll just, we'll make sure that we have those clarified prior to doing so.
Okay, next up, Resolution 2023 dash zero one five, a resolution for the purpose of transferring appropriations per ORS two nine four dash four six three.
This is just in correlation to the supplemental budget you guys approved earlier. It's just needed because that general fund increase transfer out to the park capital construction fund for Wade Creek Park requires this transfer from contingency. And I couldn't include this in the supplemental budget.
I moved to a cruiser as red.
I have a first and second, all those papers say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And next we have the second consideration for and it's 2023 dash zero zero four and ordinance implementing a transient lodging tax rate. You've all heard the first time around.
I so moved.
Okay, I got so second, I got first and second, all those papers say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, Resolution 2023 dash zero one seven, a resolution setting fees for the Wade Creek Park Community Room.
Okay, thank you. This, I didn't do a staff report for it. Pretty much the the resolution says everything on this. And we did add into the resolution what Counselor Licky had recommended previously about it's in the third, whereas at the council may at their discretion approve a fee schedule that waves or reduces fees for residents. And pretty much the first, whereas gives the purpose for this whole resolution. That the city endeavors to maintain financial stability of city programs, events and services through adequate cost recovery policies and practices. And so the recommendation is for the rental fees for the new community, Wade Creek Community Room to be $15 an hour for nonprofits, a standard rate for private parties or rentals would be $30 an hour. Or a daily rate of 200. And then if they're non-resident of nine seven oh two three or nine seven oh two two. The the rate would be $50 per an hour, per hour. For instance, somebody coming from Sandy, Oregon City. Glad to wear, but they wanted to come out and rent it, it would be a a more, a higher rate than for the local folks in our, in our area, in our library district, school district. The folks that volunteer on our committees. So that is, that is the recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. We did do some research around for instance, the community center here in town, the Oregon City Community Center, Sandy Community Center. And so these were the the fees that we came up with. And there will be a lot of free programming that takes place at that center also at the community room. Also, it's just that this would be for private party rentals, not part, not necessarily a party, but pri- a private rental. For it could be a party or it could be a meeting or, yes, questions.
All right. So I mentioned this before, but I have a proposal that would kind of be a hybrid of what some people have been concerned with in this one here. I I'm big on not charging the residency, what you pay three and a half million dollars for this whole project to get through. But I know some people think that we need to 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 charge. And so my proposal is this. The amendment would be for a deposit, a single deposit of $150, flat rate, make it simple. At the, we keep the non-resident $50 an hour, but for the 15 and the $30 an hour, so the the nonprofit, we wipe that out permanently. But the $30 an hour for in in residents, in in city residents. We wipe that out for with a 10-year sunset clause and then we can review then to potentially charge then, but that gives people who paid a lot of money for this thing, an opportunity to use it. Without having to pay additional money to use it. So and if with the $150 deposit would be for, they didn't clean it or they damaged something. That would go to, that would go to cover that. But if they left it clean, they came in and used it. There's no reason to charge them an additional amount of money. So it's already their salaries already paid for in the staff and the costs that the utilities already paid for through city funding. So it gives them a chance to get something back for the people who were patient, waited an extra year. So that's my proposal. Once again, that's white permanently outwipe the fees out for nonprofits for 10 years, no cost to local residents. Keep the $50 an hour for non-resident and make it one deposit of $150, so.
Okay, for that, what do you think, Jerry?
I'm just Googling the zip codes for George and Dodge real quick before I ask my question. I just wanted to see what the it it, see if those two members of our community were, okay, no, my question, I just answered my own question. So they're nine seven oh two three, so.
And there is an attachment there from the library board making their recommendation. Because this is more for operations of the the operational costs, you know, utilities, wifi. The cleaning, because we, although people clean up after a party, they're not, we're not going to ask them to mop the floor or, you know, do the actual cleaning that goes on. And landscape maintenance, things like that, that's just ongoing operational costs of the. actual cleaning that goes on, um, landscape maintenance, things like that. That's just ongoing um operational costs of the room.
I was just going to ask, you said some research had been done on what other places charge, what, do you have those numbers?
Yeah, I have some, I have them right here. So the community center here in Estacada charges fifty dollars an hour. Um, they do have, it's a little la- it's larger than our uh that community room up there. And I do believe they have access to the kitchen. They did give a a discount for nonprofits for twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, the Pioneer Community Center in Oregon City, um, they have, they have a larger, but there are smaller rooms that are more like ours. They charge thirty dollars per hour if you're in district and uh fifty dollars per hour if you're out of district. Um, the Sandy Community Center charges thirty-five dollars an hour. And then we had some other ones, but they were large, Wilsonville Library Community Room, um, you know, and Mount Hood Conference Centers, the Granges, the Granges usually, they tend to rent by the day. Um, at least that, well, actually, I should say Springwater Grange, yeah, Springwater Grange is a hundred and ten a day, Boring Grange is two fifty a day. Um, so that's kind of that, what we're looking at.
Right.
What's the anticipated cost of maintenance for the building for a year?
We budgeted, we budgeted, I think we thought it would be about five hundred dollars a month. Um, but by the time you're paying wifi and cleaning and um the utilities, and it could be, it could come out less than that. This is our, going to be our first year running it, so if it, I think that's what it'll, it'll come up to is about six thousand dollars for the year. Um, so if we, and have rentals that are through the roof and, you know, we don't need to charge that much, we could reduce it and still cover our operational and and our ongoing maintenance costs. Um, we could reduce it later, but this is kind of a test run, I guess, of it, based on what we're seeing elsewhere.
Um, I noticed that most of those you mentioned are not government funded buildings, so I want to re- remind that that's a government funded building. It's, the bills are going to be paid no matter what.
Does the Pioneer Pioneer.
A couple of them might be, but many of them, like the Grange and the the community center here is not government funded.
Oh, right, right.
So there there's several in there that weren't, mo- uh, many community centers are usually community funded, not government funded. So I think the one in Sandy might be though, that might be the exception. Um, the, but that's a government funded building. It's, the bills are going to be paid either way. Wifi won't cost them any extra. They have it at the library no matter what, that's.
Actually, no, we had to get, we, it has a separate one, yeah.
Uh.
It's a long story.
I won't get into technical reasons why I was not planning, but um, the uh the 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 bills are going to be paid either way. I, like I said, this is a chance for us to get something back to the people of Estacada who paid, again, three and a half million dollars for something, waited an extra year. It has a sunset clause, out of towns can do it, and they're going to pay the bills no matter what, still have funding. We give them a budget every year for this type of stuff, so.
Any more questions here?
I would just say uh probably a better compromise that you might be able to get more people on board. I would be on board with it is eliminating it for the nonprofit and for local residents for the first year, have a sunset date in one year to be able to evaluate that we're covering it with the non-resident income. And if we're not, then we can make an adjustment at that time. Ten years is a long window if if they're coming up short on it.
I'd be good with that.
Could, I I I could go with that too, and then with the backup being what was presented here today, I mean, we'd at least evaluate it after that sunset time.
I I I'm kind of in agreement with the one year, and I think you beat this enough. So the one year sounds good. Um, so let's take a, uh, you just need a consensus or a vote on it.
We'll have a vote on this because it's a resolution, but it would be revised to eliminate the fee for nonprofits, eliminate the standard rate and only charge for non-residents that, residents that are outside of nine seven oh two three, nine seven oh two two. Um, typically, we don't have a lot of, a lot of that um based on the floor room experience. We also, the damage deposits, I should call that out, fifty dollars for business meetings where no food or beverages will be served, a hundred dollars damage deposit for activities or events where food and beverages will be served. Um, and then just one last shout out to the library board, because they did recommend um that there would be fees for private use. Um, so they list out paper products, cleaning service, staff time for processing reservation, staff time for processing refund if it um if there, if we do a refundable deposit, which we would, and other utility expenses. I think it's a wonderful addition to Wade Creek Park uh library compound, and they want to see it respected and feel that the user fee will accomplish that. Um, but anyway, if we want to, if you want to remove those first two for one year, we could go from June one to June one.
I think that's fair. Right? Okay.
I just said, Jerry, one, with a damage deposit, I think this, this is keep it simple and eliminate the fifty dollar one, to keep it at a hundred dollars, because people are going to bring food in, even if they aren't serving it, they're, people are bringing soda and snacks, and it's going to happen. So if we keep it at one fee of a hundred dollars, it's refundable. And did I hear you say that they're going to charge time to refund the deposit?
No, we don't charge time, but it takes time, and there's staff time to do, to manage the reservations and do the refunds and all of that.
Great. So I I I'm completely behind the one year, um, but I just wanted to point out that um charging it, the the charges, it's a very small amount, and being, being part of a nonprofit for as long as I, as long as I had been, um, you know, I, we, yeah, y- you have to understand the, you know, the facilities are going to charge, but the one thing that that does bring in, bring in is it makes you respect that facility that much more. It makes you that much more wary of the facility that you're in. If 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 you know you're paying, you know, if money's coming out of your pocket for, for, you know, for that facility, looking the way it you know, the way it did when you walked in, the same when you walk out. So um, you know, uh, but again, I'm I'm perfectly okay with the one year.
Okay, I think, after all that, we're okay with the one year, I think with the sunset clause.
Okay. Can we approve it, the res- a resolution then with changes like that?
Yeah, okay.
I move to approve resolution two zero two three dash zero one seven with the amendments that there be no charge for rental fees for nonprofits or a standard daily rate for residents in nine seven zero two three, nine seven zero two two. Um, and that the damage deposit gets amended to a hundred dollars for all rentals with a sunset of one year.
Second.
And a first, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next citizen in group comment, I have none.
Oh, the um
Did I miss one?
The real property, the real property transactions. Um, if anybody has that motion that, based on the information that was presented in the
In the first.
In the, uh, yes.
Are are we allowed to discuss that at all at this point?
Um, you shouldn't.
We already discussed.
Yeah, we just, yeah. For the um.
I would, my, my, my one concern is I would hate to just completely eliminate the option. Because we don't, we don't know if if, you know, if similar circumstances aren't going to happen with the, with the, the next property, you know, we don't know if some, you know, if if the counter offer is going to be similar situation. We just don't know, and I would hate to eliminate, just completely eliminate the first option until we got further along in the, in the process with the, the second one. That's my, that was my only concern and um.
I don't think we, oh, I don't think we planned to eliminate it.
Yeah, that was, that's exactly what it was.
So that we could let that person know that.
I I didn't get there, we're going to eliminate, I think we're just, we're going to look at the other one and then and if it didn't, you know, do we, or see what the other option was.
Yeah.
Question?
She had a comment on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think you heard your comment about that.
Oh. We just, we didn't want to keep the option number one person um just hanging there waiting until we get further down the road, since it didn't seem to be feasible. Um, but we do really appreciate that um the willingness, even though what didn't turn out, at this point, it's not turning out to be um a feasible option based on um how that negotiation has gone, but um, so I don't know if we have to.
I mean, I I think that we don't, we don't have to formally eliminate that. I mean, what I heard said was that they had, they're had the that um the appraisal and the expectations were so far apart that it wasn't feasible for that reason. Uh, there might be some benefit to letting the person know that that we had moved on to another option for that reason. That that could make someone come to a more um you know, they they might want to revisit and think that maybe uh get a little closer. So um, I I think that I I think you could do it. I I don't think there's any harm to informing the person that that we're probably can't do it for the reasons that we can't. Because that might make the price come down, but I agree with the point that it's always smart to have a backup plan.
So as it says in the recommended, recommended language for the motion, I move to eliminate the initial site for a high level reservoir and pursue alternative sites, and I just would like to remove that, eliminate the initial site. Um, we can let him know, that's perfectly fine, letting him know, but I don't want to eliminate that opportunity just in case something happens with the potential, the potential site.
So it could be a motion to just uh pursue alternate sites, and then we'll bring it back. We'll bring back the options to you.
That may help with the alternate sites too.
Yeah.
Knowing that.
Okay. So, motion to uh, motion to pursue alternate sites for the high level reservoir.
So moved. Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next I got citizen and committee group comment. I have none in front of me. Uh, mayor council reports and comments. We will start off with you, Jerry, to know.
Um, it's been a long night. Thank everybody that was here. Thank everybody that that hung around. Um, it's been a long night. I appreciate all of you for all the hard work you put in, and good night.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, I just wanted to remind you that uh the Arts Commission has the collage workshop this coming Thursday at Amp Farm. So I hope you go to that, and I wa- I just wanted to thank Jane and Lori for their presentation. It really shows the importance uh and the benefits of school bonds, and it sets students, students up for success. Can I?
Sure.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, hanging in there. It was a long one. Appreciate it. I appreciate all of uh staff's hard work. Um, Taylor, you always, you guys always put together a you, you, you have to do a lot, and I I I do appreciate you. Thank you both, you and Alan. And Melanie, again, thanks for the Friday phone calls. They're always super informative and helped me out a lot. And um, yeah, just everybody have a nice week and weekend.
So. Um, just want to thank our deputy for being here and sitting through this long meeting as well. Um, also, uh, he left already, it's a couple minutes ago, but Representative Eve was here again. Um, so I wanted to make sure we were uh identified him, but uh other than that, uh, there, uh, just to, I said it last time, I said it again, uh HB two zero zero two is passed the house. That's the one that I'm very concerned with, because what that does, and summary is allows for children of any age in our state to get an abortion. Uh, allows the children of any age in our state to get uh gender changes and gender affirming care, all without the inclusion of a parent. If a, if a parent sees fit to try to um get between that and to try to stop it, there's, they can be put in jail for a year, including sixty-five hundred dollar fines. And at the end of the bill, it declares yet another state of emergency for the state. It's currently passed the first reading in the Senate, and it's going to be, possibly go through a couple more readings here soon. So um, if you guys don't know about that, I recommend you guys reading it. Anyone watching this reads it and be informed. And be sure to let your, your representative knows what your thoughts are on it. I do not support it. And that's why.
Okay.
I just want to echo the sentiments, sentiments of thank you to everyone who showed up, staff for getting us ready for this and putting everything together, and uh Peter and Kurt for making their time available as well, too. Just appreciate it, and then the uh active engaged discussion. It's been great.
Just want to thank everybody that came tonight, and thank you, staff, for all the work you're doing. Wanted to um recognize the presenters for the community heart and soul. My questions were just for gathering information. They're not here anymore, but um, I hope that what we were saying isn't discouraging the community engagement, because that's something that I've heard over and over, is that we need more community engagement, and so I'm hoping that we can find a way to utilize uh grassroots movement in the community without causing any legal implications for the city, and I'm looking forward to hearing more information about it, so.
Okay, great. And uh, on my part, I thank everyone for coming tonight. I thank staff for everything they did, putting this all together. And it was a long one. It was a long one, a lot of stuff in there. Um, I'm hoping that the next few meetings coming up are going to be a little less uh packed, but uh we appreciate everybody tonight, and thank you very much for coming. So thank you, and this meeting is.
Thanks.